Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Ann, could you please call the row?
Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lori?
Here.
Benon?
Here.
Black?
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you would please remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Tim Bridges representing the Calvary Chapel.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to share a little anecdote, I hope you don't mind, just short. About two and a half months ago, my mom moved here from Portland, Oregon, and she's living in an assisted living facility now. But as she made her way around town, she said, "Everybody is so friendly in this city." And I said, "Well, Mom, that's why we're the Smile Capital." So, let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for our city. Thank you for all those in city government who dedicate their time and energy to serve us. The mayor, the council gathered here, the city support staff, our first responders, our educators, please be with them, bless them all, and especially be with our council in this meeting tonight. May they function as a team, may wisdom, courage, and fairness prevail, may decisions reflect righteousness, give them vision and guidance to help Pocatello thrive at every level, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item 3 as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the Police Union Quarterly Update Meeting of September 6, 2018. B, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider Treasurer's Report for August showing cash and investments as of August 31, 2018. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the Treasurer's Report for the month of August 2018. Total cash and cash equivalents represents 91 percent of city's monies totaling $46,829,084. Total long-term investments represent 9 percent of the city's monies totaling $4,629,719. For total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $51,458,804. This amount is down $3,6,990 for the month of August. On page 2 of the report, I've noted some key receipts for the month. We received an airport grant of $48,850. Cable franchise fee revenue came in at $49,341. This amount is down 10.9 percent from the prior year. Transit grant, State of Idaho, $62,424. Transit grant, Federal, $85,901. And Idaho State Liquor Tax, $143,924. This amount is up 7.89 percent from the prior year. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments. On page 3 of the report, I'm presenting the trust funds. So, total cash and cash equivalents for the month of August, $1,058,345. Total long-term investments, $4,179,86. So, total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments are $5,237,431. Total cash receipts received, $29,631 for the month. Total cash disbursements, $54,834. We had a net change in long-term investments of a decrease of $12,159 for an overall decrease of the month of $37,363. Page 4 of the report lists all the funds and their cash balances with their respective net change for the month. I've highlighted the general fund, which had a cash ending balance of $12,713,181. This is a net decrease of $1,323,486 for the month of August. Page 5 of the report is discussion and analysis. This is presented for your review. And page 6 of the report is the five-year trend cash balances. We have three funds that had negative balances. Transit Urban Fund, which is a grant reimbursement program, $174,664. This has pending grant receivables to come in to cover that negative balance. Debt Service Fund, WPC, $2,434,699. This is covered by a transfer that will come from debt 32 to cover the debt service payments made in August. And then, CDBG Fund, $102,916. This has pending grants. This is another grant reimbursement fund. So, overall, this is a very strong cash position for the city. This concludes my report.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Move on to C, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the reappointment of Roseanne Vigorous to continue her service as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Ms. Vigorous's term will begin September 22, 2018, and will expire September 22, 2020. D, Golf Advisory Committee Reappointment. Council may wish to consider, to confirm the reappointment of Larry Mortimer to continue his service as a member of the Golf Advisory Committee. Mr. Mortimer's term will begin October 6, 2018, and will expire October 6, 2021. E, Pocatello Arts Council Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the reappointment of Stan Kopek to continue his service as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council. Mr. Kopek's term will begin October 1, 2018, and will expire October 1, 2021. F, Council Decision, 9100 Block of Anderson Lane. Council may wish to adopt this decision granting a request by Kenneth Horstley to rezone by contract approximately 3.50 acres of undeveloped land located in the 9100 Block of Anderson Lane from residential medium-density, single-family RMS to light industrial LI for the construction of self-service storage and an outdoor storage area for recreational vehicles and boats pursuant to Pocatello Municipal Code 17.02.180B1, subject to conditions. G, Council Decision, Elm Street Subdivision Short Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short plat for Elm Street Subdivision, which subdivides approximately .30 acres of land into two residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located at 187 East Taft Avenue. H, Council Decision, Trelkrik Estates, Division 2 Final Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Trelkrik Estates, Division 2, which subdivides approximately 13.24 acres of land into 34 residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located near Chaplain Place and Melo-Lun Loop.
Magellan.
Magellan Loop.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Ann, could you please call the row?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Benon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 4 as Communication and Proclamations. We have no proclamations, but we do have a scout troop here. We would like one of you to stand up and tell us what troop you're from.
Scout troop 316.
316?
Yeah.
You're here for your citizenship and the community badge?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here. You picked a great night to come. Do we have another? I don't see any others. Are you three with them? Where's your uniforms? All right. We'll have to work on that one, won't we? Okay, thank you. Agenda Item 5 is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On October 4, at 5:30 PM will be Agenda Clarification Meeting. On October 4, at 6 PM will be a regular council meeting. October 11, at 9 AM will be a work session. Other events on September 22 is the annual Oktober-Bear Fest.
Oktober-Bear Fest.
Oktober-Bear Fest at Zoo Idaho from 4 PM to 7 PM. As a reminder, Zoo Idaho is open on weekends only until October 28. Okay, we'll move into Agenda Item... Oh, I forgot to announce. If you are here for Agenda Item Number 10, which I bet there's not anybody here for that, but if you are, it's been pulled from the agenda. And so, we apologize, but it has been pulled.
At the request of the applicant.
At the request of the applicant. We will move on to Agenda Item 6, Public Hearing. Additional Proposed Fiscal Year 2018 September Budget Amendments. This time has been set aside for council to receive public comments on additional proposed fiscal year 2018 budget amendments as discussed at the September 13, 2018 work session. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. The 2018 budget adopted in August of 2017 was developed with anticipated grants and estimated revenues. The city elects to adopt a restrictive budget and amend in detail for unplanned revenues. Tonight, the Finance Department is requesting additional budget authority for expenditures related to unforeseen revenues in two funds. The Finance Department is requesting amendments to the Ambulance Fund and the Zoo Improvement Fund. The Ambulance Fund requested $52,800 in additional authority for overtime expenses, and the funding is provided by Bannock County Ambulance District. The final amendment is for the Zoo Improvement Fund. The authority provides for the continued construction of the wetlands project and is funded by the grant received in fiscal year 2017. The total for all amendments is $62,428. This amendment process began with the two required public notices on September 7 and 14 in the Idaho State Journal. A detailed discussion was provided on September 13, and at the end of tonight's meeting, the council will consider the amended ordinance.
Any questions for Joyce, council? Have you... Joyce, have we received any written correspondence?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then there's no reason for you, Joyce, to come back up and explain anything, so I declare the public hearing closed. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7. Public Hearing, Proposed Ordinance to Regulate Feeding of Wildlife Within City Limits. This time has been set aside for council to receive public comments on a proposed ordinance to regulate feeding of wildlife as discussed at the April 12, 2018 study session. I declare the public hearing open. And we would ask the fishing game or the applicant for this to present.
Okay.
So, just real quick, before we get started, when you come up to speak, if you would just let us give us your name and where you're from, and then, reminder, you have three minutes, but for the applicant, you have 10 minutes. The last three minutes will be on the board there, so that you know when your time's about up.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Zach Lockyer. I'm a Wildlife Manager with Idaho Fishing Game, here to share with you some information about the feeding ordinance put forth by the task force here in Pocatello. Real quick, a little history on how we got here, what is the Urban Wildlife Task Force? We had a meeting last May with the community where people got a voice their concerns relative to urban wildlife. From that, a task force was developed with dedicated community volunteer members. This group includes varying perspectives, experiences, and interests, and they're charged with addressing some of the challenges associated with urban wildlife. Their mission is to reduce the potential safety concerns for humans, pets, and wildlife themselves, as well as reducing damage to private property while maintaining the aesthetic and social benefits that wildlife provides. So, one of the cool things about living in this community and being in Pocatello is the rich wildlife we have and getting to have those experiences. This is what we want to maintain, and people still have that opportunity. This is some of the situations we want to avoid, where we see damage to private property, damage or injury to wildlife, and potential injury to people. I want to jump into the components of the ordinance right off the bat. Currently, the way it's written, it would be unlawful for any person to intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly feed or attract wildlife. The exceptions would be birds, except for wild turkey and waterfowl, tree squirrels, and domestic livestock and pets, seeds, nectar, or other materials and feeders. The suggestion is to have that at five feet above ground, so it's still reasonable for residents to put out their bird feeders, but it's not on the ground where it's an attractant to some of these other urban wildlife. This would apply to all areas within the Pocatello city limits. For violations, any Idaho Fishing Game officer or city animal control officer or state certified peace officer may investigate and issue a written warning or citation for a violation of this ordinance. For penalties, any violation of this ordinance is a misdemeanor punishable as set forth in Pocatello Municipal Code. I want to highlight, this is something that Idaho Fishing Game has been dealing with for a long time. We've been educating and talking to people for quite some time. It hasn't worked. It will continue to be a key part of this process as it unfolds, but to date, it hasn't been effective. Real quick, how we got here. Wildlife populations have been doing well. This is an example on the upper right of mule deer in southeast Idaho. Ups and downs, but in general, an increasing population. At the same time, our human population is increasing. Idaho is one of the fastest-growing states in the nation, and so it's a ripe situation for overlap with wildlife and people and potential conflict. One of the big concerns in Pocatello, especially with deer, is wildlife vehicle collisions, deer collisions. In 2017, there were 135 mule deer killed in Bannock County. Looking at the last three years through 2017, almost 400 deer killed. This is a very conservative estimate. We know we don't detect all of these, not all of them are reported. There's some research that suggests for every deer that is detected, there's one that isn't that might die from injuries away from the road. And so, this has tremendous consequences for potential risk to human safety and to our mule deer herd. Just a quick, some stats from an insurance company. They looked at chances of hitting a deer across the entire nation. For Idaho, the estimate is one out of every 151 drivers hits a deer in Idaho. Looking at, what does this mean financially? In 2017, the average cost per claim was just over $4,000. So, just looking at the deer killed in Bannock County, that would be almost half a million dollars in damages. So, there's a significant financial burden here as well. Deer aren't the only species. We also have urban turkey, waterfowl, mountain lions. Mountain lions are mule deer's primary prey, and so often, we see mountain lions that follow their prey into town. When you have artificial feed sites that create very predictable patterns for deer, it makes very easy hunting conditions for mountain lions. Waterfowl, this last three years, over $8,000 in damages to golf courses, parks, recreation areas. Idaho Fishing Game has moved a number of turkeys from Pocatello, and so there's other species here besides deer. In addition to those that I kind of highlighted, we get reports of people feeding skunks. We have had conflicts with black bears. We all often hear about moose in town, raccoons, and so there's a lot of other species, too, that they might not be the intention of feeding, but they're also around. Why is feeding bad? People feed with the best of intentions. Often, it's they want to see wildlife, they think they might be doing good for something for wildlife, but there are some unintended consequences of feeding. One is animals can become habituated. They get very used to being around people and around structures. Artificial feeding can change their behavior. An example is deer might randomly move around a landscape to feed, but if they've got an artificial feed site, maybe they're crossing Bannock Highway on a regular basis going to and from the feed site, increasing that potential for injury. Anytime you concentrate animals, you increase the potential for spread of disease. As I mentioned earlier, you can attract unwanted species, such as predators like mountain lions. Another thing that's hard to grasp is, again, it's the best of intentions when you feed animals, you're trying to do something good for them, but often, it's not good for wildlife. They've got very specific nutritional requirements, and the feed that's put out doesn't meet those needs. And so, you see animals that are in poor body condition, they don't look completely healthy, and often, that's related to a nutritional imbalance. And then, you might be very comfortable having deer in your property and seeing them, but they don't always stay right in your yard. There's indirect consequences to your neighbors. So, what would a feeding ordinance do? It would not eliminate urban wildlife or conflicts. This is a tool in the toolbox. It's a first step at addressing this issue. Pocatello will always have urban wildlife. This is a way to address some of these current challenges. An important part, it will not be a burden to city law enforcement. This is going to be a shared responsibility. Idaho Fishing Game gets the majority of these calls already and is already responding to those. This gives some teeth and a way to enforce the issue of urban feeding. If this passes early on, we likely will get quite a few phone calls, but as people get comfortable and learn the ordinance, learn to live with it, we'll likely see those calls reduced. It will reduce the potential for human safety risk and property damage. I think this is a key point. Anything we can do, even if it's the smallest decrease in the risk to human safety, I think it's worth seriously considering. And then, lastly, it will force wild animals to adopt a more natural behavior. They won't have those abnormal patterns, less private property damage, less of that aggressive, abnormal behavior, and hopefully reduce attracting unwanted species. I want to let everyone know, this is not new. Pocatello's not alone. This is going on across our country. There's a lot of communities that have been doing this for a long time. They're all in different phases. One of the common themes is to start with a feeding ordinance. Some communities stop there, some implement additional measures, but this is something we've learned and gleaned from other examples. So, to summarize, a feeding ordinance would reduce habituation of animals, it would reduce conflict and safety concerns, ultimately, it would be better for wildlife, and it would reduce the abundance and frequency of animals in city limits. Again, wildlife will always be part of Pocatello. We want that. That's one of the appeals of living here. And this is not intended to rid Pocatello of those cool animals that we all like to experience, it's to really address some of those places where we've got some conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, real quick?
I've heard various numbers, but how many deer actually live within the confines of the city limits of Pocatello?
That's a great question. We don't have a number. The surveys we conduct are outside of city limits. That's something that the task force has talked about. If that's an important piece of information, that's something that we could probably develop and test and go get a count and estimate, but we have not done a formal survey to estimate numbers in Pocatello. I'd be guessing, and I don't want to be bad.
I could guess.
She's heard different numbers. The number of people have guessed, it sounds like.
Yeah. I've heard as many as 600, and they're all in my yard.
That's a guess by his wife. Any other questions?
Well, as a follow-up to that, I was reading, trying to determine what other cities had similar ordinances or what their experiences had been, because I know when you came to our study session, you didn't have necessarily statistics from some of those communities. One of the articles that I read was from Sioux City, and they did count the number of urban deer that they had, and they said, in this article anyway, that the number of urban deer they had decreased, but their number of vehicle collisions with deer did not decrease at all. Can you speak to that at all, since one of the primary goals is for safety? What your thoughts are on that?
I'm not familiar with that particular situation, and it would be hard to speculate on why they're not seeing that. I think every community is very unique with, you know, what's the speed limit? What's the obstruction? What are the driving conditions? So, it might be fewer deer, but there's a hotspot that is just really prone to vehicle collisions. I'd have to look into that specific situation.
Okay.
I have one other question. I've heard that it's not good to feed ducks bread. Can you comment on that?
That is accurate. Similar to what I talked about with deer, and at the study session, I went into a little bit more detail, but these animals have very specific diets, and they've got gut biology and microorganisms that are to break down certain types of food, certain protein fiber contents. And so, some of this food, like bread, it might be high in one aspect, low in another, and they're not getting nutritionally what they need, or they're getting more than they need. And with waterfowl and bread, I don't know the intricacies of physiologically what that causes in waterfowl. I'm a little more familiar with deer, but it's that same idea that they are built for very specific food types, and it changes throughout the year. And so, deer, for example, in the winter, they're not built to have high protein diets, and so when they eat, like, alfalfa hay in the winter, they get bloat and can get sick and sometimes even die.
I'd like to ask you again about the exceptions or the animals that would not be included. And you had birds, and like, people could still have their bird feeders, you had tree squirrels, and was there another one?
That was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any issues with squirrels?
Not that I'm aware of. And one of the challenges when thinking about a bird feeder, if we allow bird feeders, how do you exclude squirrels? I think that'd be really difficult, and I'm not aware of squirrels creating conflicts. Maybe waking people up early in the morning, but that one was just a hard one to tackle because, one, we don't really know if there is a conflict issue, and we want people to still have their bird feeders out, and how do you exclude a squirrel from bird seed? But I don't think squirrels are going to be a major issue.
Okay.
I have a question. In the last year, or maybe perhaps this season, how many calls or complaints have you received on this regard?
That's a great question. I wish we would have a tally of those calls. There are a lot. Often, the response is we go knock on the door, we talk to somebody, try to give them the information about the pros and cons, but I don't know a number. I wish I did.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have received a couple of correspondents. Did we receive any others than what has been provided for our packet?
Yes. Those have been distributed to the council.
They've been distributed, but there haven't been any others.
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then we will move on to anyone supporting the application. Any... Okay.
My name is Clowell Bennett. I live at 3559 Jason Avenue, and I'm in support of this ordinance, but I think it's a baby step, that we need to really continue to go forward. I think wildlife inside of the city and in my yard, they live there year-round. There's a huge buck that was born there, and every year, he's back and grows. And from the safety standpoint, I've had two daughters that hit deer within city limits on the interstate, one totaled a car. The other one had 5,000. The other one had $5,000 damage. There's also been a fatality in North Idaho hitting a deer, and so how much is a life worth? And I've been told by the Fishing Game that I live in the interface, and yeah, the mountains are fairly close to us, but I've lived there for 60 years, and it's only been the last 10, 15 that we had deer that lived in our yard, ate our garden. They learned to eat anything that we grow. And so we spend a lot of money for water and growing stuff, and then we have to spend more to either fence them out, and they've learned to eat anything that there is. So I think it's a baby step, and I think I'd like to encourage Fishing Game, one, we need to have fences so they can't get on the interstate. It's costing us all a lot of money for the damages as well as could impact life. And I think traditionally, they don't want to spend any of their money to protect the Fishing Game. They want either the highway department or somebody else to pay for it. And so I just want us to move forward as rapidly as possible so that we don't have these deer destroying everything that we try to grow. We provided the habitat, and that's why they moved here. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would put your name on that sheet right there, please, that would be great. Any others in support of the application?
Can I ask Clell a question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Clell, is there anything besides the fences that would contribute to giant steps rather than just the baby steps that you think in your mind?
Fishing Game tells me that it's impractical to trap deer, but it seems like we can trap anything else. I think that they need to be moved. I think they need to have longer seasons. They showed a graph that we've got a higher population than we've ever had, and so when they run out of food, other places, they go where there's food, and we're irrigating and creating a habitat that wasn't there originally. We're not really in, I don't live. What was traditionally deer range, all there was was sagebrush and dune grass there. Thank you.
Okay, and we've got one more support. Clell, if you could just grab that sheet and sit down, and then you'll fill it out when you're done as well, that'd be great.
Okay.
My name is Beverly Klein, and I live in the Johnny Creek area. I also am a member of the task force that put together this ordinance, and it has been an incredible learning experience because we have lived in the Johnny Creek area for nearly 40 years. When the deer started coming down, it was so exciting, so beautiful, so wonderful. And we have bird feeders all over our property, and we realized that we were feeding the deer. They would stand in the trees and wait until I filled those feeders, and then as soon as I went in, they'd come out. And we began to see the same deer over and over. And so really, it wasn't until Jennifer Jackson had a column in the Journal addressing feeding the deer that we realized that we had been making a mistake for a lot of years, and so we, you know, had to stop doing it. We were keeping Costco in business with bird seed. So without going over what Zach has already said, we are aware that we were disrupting their normal foraging. It is dangerous to the deer. It's dangerous to all of us. And so with that in mind, our ordinance is designed to address these issues, and I'm definitely in favor of the ordinance.
Thank you. Any others in support of the ordinance? Any uncommitted to the ordinance? Any opposed to the ordinance? Okay, then we would, I would, we would give Zach an opportunity to comment if you would like to comment on the questions that were asked.
Sure.
I can remind you, two questions I heard were, one was the fences and fences along the freeway, and then the second one was the ability to trap and move deer out.
So I'll touch on fences first. We do have fences on a variety of different roadways. The high fence that goes from just below Century down to Income, that's on both sides of the interstate, that's something we partnered with, with ITD. We also have a high fence on Highway 30 going over Fish Creek Summit, and we have committed funds to those. They are very expensive projects, and they are effective. It's a permanent barrier. It requires maintenance, though, and anytime it's on a highway or in that right-of-way, there's coordination between other agencies. It's not just Idaho Fishing Game putting up a fence. So it is a tool. It's a tool we've used. We have contributed funds to a variety of projects. We're looking at some other ones elsewhere. It's finding the right place that makes the most sense. What was the other question?
Trapping and moving the deer.
So we have a long history of trapping animals and a long history of trapping and moving animals, and there are examples of there of communities that have trapped urban deer, urban wildlife, and moved them. We have trapped turkeys in town right up Pocatello Creek Road and moved them. With deer, it is, again, it's labor-intensive, it's expensive, it is doable, but when you have urban deer, they are used to living in a urban setting, and you take them and put them in a novel landscape, they're not used to. Survival's incredibly low. We see really, really high mortality. They're very susceptible to predation by predators because they can't navigate this new environment very well. And so from a practicality standpoint, putting all this effort into moving a bunch of animals that aren't going to survive is a hard thing to justify. And then also, we're in an area where we're learning a lot about wildlife disease, and so we're really careful and cautious about moving animals to new areas. We don't want to introduce something in a place that didn't exist.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mayor.
I had several questions that I think are probably not for the representatives from the Fishing Game. Like, one of the questions that I wanted to address was with our police department and also our animal services. You know, I know it was mentioned that we would not have a burden on law enforcement, but I have not heard that directly from them, and it doesn't look like we have representatives here available tonight to comment on that. So that would be one thing I would be very interested in knowing and getting their perspective on. Additionally, I had questions in this particular ordinance. I was comparing against Logan's ordinance, and I was wondering why there are no fines associated and why it's a misdemeanor and not an infraction. And I know our city attorney is not here tonight. We have our legal counsel here tonight, but the person who worked on that is not here. So I would be in favor of bringing this back to a work session where we could get a couple of those questions addressed. Because, and I want to be very clear, I am not advocating for feeding of wildlife, or I'm not in favor of people doing that, but I just want to make sure, I don't want to put a law into place and wish that we had done something differently, or find out that it's not enforceable the way we think it is, or something like that. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't know if I need to make that into a formal motion, is that?
Well, you're just speaking now. I haven't closed the public hearing yet or not, but we'll see what happens.
Should I have waited until we did? Sorry.
We'll wait and see what happens with the motion when we're finished.
I'd really like to hear from Mr. Cheatham. I know he's followed this closer than any of the rest of us.
I've been involved with this since it started as a member of the task force before I was elected to council, and I've got a lot of experience dealing with deer. I was president of the Southeast Idaho Mule Deer Foundation. I put up those fences south of town for six years. I've got a couple of friends who are wildlife biologists. This is all they've done their entire careers. They no longer live here, but I've spent a lot of time with them. As Zach indicated, this is just a tool. This is not going to eliminate the problem tomorrow. We pass an ordinance, and I think everybody on the committee understands that. This is a beginning of a process to eliminate a problem that's really blown up over the last two, three, four years, and we need to do something. You know, the mission was of the death in Northern Idaho that Clell talked about. We had a guy killed on a motorcycle south of town here who hit a deer. It's a problem, and it's not going to get better if we don't do something. We can't sit back and wait for winter to kill all the deer around here. It's not going to happen. This council needs to do something to help Pocatello alleviate this situation. I really believe that.
Okay, all right. Then I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, we've heard a lot of testimony tonight. There are unanswered questions we have, and I know Councilman Bray would like to be here for the final decision. So I would move that we set this matter as an agenda item on a future city council work session so the council may consider the testimony received tonight and decide how best to proceed.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Manon. And could you please call the rule?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, then we will move. Thank you very much. We will let you know when it is, what will be on in the work session so that we can get these questions answered and get moving on it.
Good job, Zach.
Yeah, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 8, Right-of-Way Use License Swire Coca-Cola. Counsel may wish to consider a request by Swire Coca-Cola represented by signature signs for a right-of-way use license to allow placement of an awning with signage over the front of the business projecting over the sidewalk at 1003 North Main Street. Staff recommended conditions are listed in the executive summary.
Mayor, I move that we approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham. And could you please call the rule?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Exception Request, AF Center Incorporated. Counsel may wish to approve a request from Steve Booth, representing AF Center Incorporated, for an exception to City Code 15.12.080 that restricts the capacity of above-ground fuel tanks. City code limits the tank capacity to 1,000 gallons, and the AF Center would like to install two additional tanks that exceed the allowed capacity. Airport and fire department staff have reviewed the application and support the request.
Mr. Mayor?
Manon?
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 9, the request from AF Center to install two extra, 1,000 capacity of, two extra tanks. Sorry.
Next.
We have a motion by Manon and a second by Cheatham. And could you please call the rule?
Manon?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Thank you. As a reminder, Agenda Item 10 was pulled, so we'll move to Agenda Item 11. Agreement, Idaho Department of Water Resources. Counsel may wish to approve an agreement with Idaho Department of Water Resources as discussed at the September 13, 2018 executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of Agenda Item Number 11, the agreement with the IDWR.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. And could you please call the rule?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12 is an ordinance, Agenda Item 12A, an ordinance providing that the airport commission shall continue as an advisory board to the mayor and city council, and that the provisions of the commission shall be established by resolution. Counsel, how do you wish to have this ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 12A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. And could you please call the rule?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Kirk, could you please read the ordinance?
Certainly, Your Honor. Boy, you scouts are in for a treat here.
They are.
You're wearing your mayor badges, isn't it? Okay. "An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho repealing Chapter 2.42 (airport commission) of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, 1983, providing that the board shall continue to function under provisions set by resolution of the city council, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with."
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12B is an ordinance approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2018 appropriations ordinance, increasing the total fiscal year expenditures by $62,428, to account for additional revenues including grant funds received by the city and to use previous unappropriated cash balances for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Counsel, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Counsel Woman Adamson.
Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item 12B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the entire ordinance be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lorick. And could you please call the rule?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Kirk, could you please read the ordinance?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a good, the scouts get a treat.
You betcha, Your Honor. "An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending ordinance number 2994, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2018, providing for an increase in expenditures in the ambulance fund and zoo improvement fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $62,428, providing that the revenue to pay for said increases shall be derived from transfers, grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of appropriation ordinance number 2994 not herein previously amended in ordinance number 3000 and ordinance number 3010 and ordinance number 3014 not herein shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasion having been dispensed with."
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12B is an ordinance approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2018 appropriations ordinance, increasing the total fiscal year expenditures by $62,428, to account for additional revenues including grant funds received by the city and to use previous unappropriated cash balances for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Counsel, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Counsel Woman Adamson.
Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item 12B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the entire ordinance be submitted for publication.
Mayor and counsel, Andy Moldenhauer, Pocatello Firefighters, Local 187. Last union, or last council meeting, I came to you, and I let you know that we were doing Fill the Boot today. I wanted to thank Councilman Johnston and Councilwoman Lorik for coming over and helping us with that event, and speaking to the press for us. And yeah, look at that. And we sure appreciate that, and I would also really like to thank the generosity of the city of Pocatello, the citizens, because without them, we wouldn't have been able to raise any money. I don't know what our total is yet. We'll probably know after a day or two. In addition to that, I'm wearing a pink t-shirt, because October, we do breast cancer awareness, and we wear pink t-shirts on Fridays and Saturdays as our uniform to raise awareness for breast cancer. And we sell these shirts to the public, and all the proceeds that we get from selling them, we donate to charity, to breast cancer causes. I have pictures of what, this is our shirt from last year, and I have pictures of what our shirt's going to look like this year. I'd like to challenge the council to purchase a shirt and wear them on Fridays through the month of October. So I'd be happy to distribute these and let you guys see them. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
I'll take one.
Thank you.
They're all $20, sorry, because of how much they cost.
Man, you should have waited and told everybody how much I was. You've got two orders. You already got it done, so you don't let them go back.
$80 t-shirts.
That's right.
You could have charged them.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Thank you to the council for your work this afternoon and also this evening. Muchly appreciated. And with that, we are adjourned.